The environment that's been fostered throughout the Hadley Public Schools, based on the student projects for gender equity, I would say that that would be another great example of just the environment that's fostered through leadership in schools.
Just to echo one more to the second bullet point in particular, I feel like more than not, we have updates regularly at meetings of the social justice incentives or gender equity. And we're always hearing something just very positive to what's going on in our society in general, and hearing of her support and active role. And all these initiatives for the student would go show that she does exceed in that area.
One other thing that I would like to say is I'm having a child at Hadley Elementary. I'm not sure how it works up at Hopkins. I know that there's like tier support for students at the lower grades. It would be good to see that continue up through the higher grades, where that kind of stops around the third grade. It would be good to see in the future that those tier supports grow to other tiers.
So do we have a recommendation for reading on this goal at exceeded?
I would say exceeded.
Yeah. Two is exemplary.
Yeah, so performance standard two, exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, or unsatisfactory. Given the goal rating.
Unsatisfactory.
Yeah. You got it. Must be difficult to get that.
Yes.
All right. Thank you for making our job easier. All right, goal number four. So this is aligned with standard three. And standard three is family and community engagement. So the goal number four is leading Hadley implementing key enhancements to improve family and community engagement. And we have three examples here and status included. So on this one, I'm going to speak for myself, just being, you know, part of the community here as well, not just the school committee, but and hearing from others in the community. I have you as exceeded on this. And, you know, your communication and transparency with the community to me is spot on. And it helps in terms of, I feel like people are informed and where people know that something is, when you know that something might be brewing or coming up as a topic of discussion, that we're all informed, which helps us to help support you and support others in knowing, you know, what's going on. So in terms of what can be shared and what facts are. So I appreciate that because I've never felt caught off guard or feeling like there were mixed signals or mixed messages.
And multiple modalities of keeping us informed, just making sure that we do check our, that we do check our emails and everything like that. Just, I definitely appreciate, I definitely appreciate that. I would consider that like above and beyond of just standard of just making sure they're notified, like making sure that we actually receive the information, I would say. Would definitely support exceeded.
That's just when he texts me to tell me to read my email. So next time I hear from the voicemail, they tell me to read my text.
So I just wanted to add, I agree with the exceeded, but I would like to go one step beyond. I know that this really talks about community engagement and two-way communication, but the one thing that I think really brings it to point is that she's always making herself available for parents for any concern that they need. She takes the word open door policy to a literal. She's always willing to hear, willing to listen, almost all the time, no matter what time, she's always available.
And I appreciate that you show up to your school events. I know that's a lot to ask.
Some periods of time, there's no place else I've ever been, some periods of time, like all of us staring at a computer screen saying, oh, I just want to get a game right now.
So I mean, I think if we get any feedback from the survey that indicates different modes of communication or some gap, you know, obviously we can address that. But I'm looking forward to seeing, hearing about that very much because I think that that has seen increased improvements over time.
I agree.
Okay, well, with that discussion, I would recommend a rating of a goal as either exceeded or met.
I'm going to exceed it.
I would go to exceed it.
Okay. I would agree. And then on the performance standards, so we'll have that as unsatisfactory. I'll put that as exemplary.
Thank you.
Okay, goal number five. This is with standard four. And standard four is professional culture. These, this goal number five in particular talks about promoting the success of all students by nurturing and sustaining a culture of reflective practice, high expectations, and continued learning, sorry, continuous learning for all staff. And we have five examples here, or five strands here.
My initial recommendation on this is met. I think that these bullets have been met, the NEASK study in particular, and what we'll be doing with those outcomes in terms of what's been addressed and what will build out in the future, that there's more growth in this area in terms of these goals. But I feel satisfied that they have, that what was laid out here has been met.
I agree.
That makes sense.
Okay. You're welcome. And then, so on standard four, overall, the goal of met, we can go with exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, or unsatisfactory.
I would say proficient.
I would agree. Okay, so then the overall summative rating of performance across that same exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, or unsatisfactory. We've had three standards, exemplary and one at proficient. I would move to have us at exemplary overall. Okay?
I agree.
I agree.
Are you doing math? No, I'm trying to silence it, it keeps going on. Yeah, I would agree, exemplary.
Well, thank you. I love working here. I am just satisfied, you know, I've taken my key and I tend to a lot. Thank you, I really appreciate it.
And we're satisfied that you're not running on the ghost wheel.
No, that's very, thank you. We've got to find a water bottle refill station before we lock you on the building.
See that?
There is one here, but I don't know where it is. I also noticed when I was going through this, full disclosure, keeping myself right size. Thank you for those compliments. And I noticed a typo on that. So that's fantastic.
Is that right?
Oh, yeah. So when you're getting. Oh, there's that one, oh, good, there's two.
It's throughout, it's consistent, actually. Consistently misspelled.
Well, spelling wasn't on.
Prioritized spelling.
Okay, moving on, HES handbook.
Minimal changes this year. So just a few things, what you received was a copy of the entire handbook with track changes. Most of them are pretty straightforward. Birthday parties. I just want to do something on behalf of a teacher representative from the wellness committee that wanted to really be sure that the school committee understood the reason for this recommendation. So the draft notice you have from the wellness committee to go home to families, that hasn't gone home yet. I believe it's going to be reworded, rewritten. Because although there's a line about the focus allowing teachers to focus on learning in the classroom on time on learning, the primary reason for making this decision was out of concern for students. One, that students who might have life-threatening allergies or other things don't have to feel badly about that, but sometimes they've created an issue. And also, not all families are in the same economic position to bring things into a classroom. So it can really be something that is challenging for some people. It makes them feel something that's supposed to be joyous and making people feel that, right, if I don't, I'm not in a position to bring things in. So this is the primary reason we're moving to that school-wide approach.
So what is that school-wide? What is that?
So it will be for a nutritious, so that every, there'll be designated day every month in which all birthdays will be celebrated. And every student in the school will receive a nutritious cookie or cupcake, meaning that it adheres to standards set forth by USDA and our wellness policies. And then in the month of September, we'll recognize all August and September birthdays, and in June, June and July birthdays.
And this is for both schools?
Yes. It's more of an issue at the elementary school. I mean, parents are really trying to end it. Children are trying to have fun and do a nice thing. And sometimes they bring in these wonderful sweets, which again, some of you might feel a jerk, or the next, another child might be taking a wish.
So the day of any kind of celebration, you know, kind of all like.
Correct. I'd like to point that out. All right, some management of that. And then on page seven, straightforward, party students must be accompanied. The health information section is one that our nurse leader does every single year. So she just pretty much struck everything that was there.
Is that for Hopkins or Hadley?
This is Hadley Elementary. Yes, this is Hadley Elementary. Hopkins handbook will be, you'll have that next, in July. So she updates that annually and tries to streamline the health information. And then the appropriate dress policy on page 27 is essentially an elementary version. The gender equity students at Hopkins insisted, help me with that. It's a HES version. So it's just the things that didn't apply, like they don't have an advisory board. They, you know, it's just some minor changes from HA. But it's essentially the same information. And the cafeteria includes now the before-school breakfast program and the frozen treat Fridays. We don't have a special Friday, but what treats are available are available. We just changed that.
Just a question about the dress code.
Sure.
Going back to that, because I know Keith, you and I looked at that as part of one of the policies. Some of this language looks familiar in terms of probably similar to Hopkins policy, or maybe it's a district policy.
It's Hopkins, it's Hopkins Code.
Okay. Has anything come up with the Code of Conduct that would influence language or terminology in this handbook?
No, the only thing, so there's some references to like flip-flops not be allowed in the play structure, so that's an elementary thing. It's not a Hopkins, it's not a Hopkins thing. And really just around the advisory board piece. So the transgender and gender not performing is exactly the same. There isn't an advisory board at the elementary school, but there is a place, the students do have recourse, or parents, depending on the age of the student. But to say, you know, they disagree and the steps are pretty much the same, they just don't go through an advisory board. They bring them out to the principal and to the superintendent. And then, and then the only other change was classroom holidays/special event policies. So parties, rather, not just on page thirty, it was one month change. Just said classroom parties. I don't know what kind of parties we appear for, people think we're having. There's still parties, I'm not sure, but we wanted to be really clear.
All right, so this does require a vote?
Can I just ask one question now that, well, two questions actually, on student arrival? I feel like I remember seeing somewhere when I was looking through this the first time, and maybe I was just rereading this and I thought that there was an edit, something that would really stress the issue of drivers not being in that bus loop at any time during school hours. If that was, if maybe I, there was, okay. There's just something, because I know that there was the.
Yeah.
So I was just hoping that that would be stressed somewhere.
The job office? So you're thinking, you saw that it was stressed somewhere?
Yeah, I'm thinking that, okay, no, yeah, there we go, there's, it was bolded. It was bolded.
An upper one, maybe?
Yeah, on page four. And if I might make a suggestion, just to really drive it home to parents, that new number ten on page seven, to put a time, again, in that spot as to when students would be considered tardy. So I, full disclosure on my part, if I see, even if it's like, even like a little after eight-thirty, if I still see Dr. Wickman out there, I'm like, no, good.
Okay, any other questions on the handbook? Great. Okay, I'll just need a motion to approve it.
With the recommended edit.
Right.
Adding the timeline.
Motion, motion to approve the recommended edit. Seconded.
On favor. All right. Okay, next, well, we talked about recommended changes to birthday celebrations through wellness committees, so that's part of that. Is there any other discussion needed on that? Okay? And that doesn't require a separate note. Hopkins programming and schedule updates.
We talked about this a little bit before. So we have moved ahead at this point with eliminating the family and consumer science program at Hopkins Academy. And we will be posting an additional now, teacher. We have added electives. So what's happened as a result of that is we've reallocated, since we still have a level service budget, we've reallocated that FTE to add a math position. We also added additional electives in the blocks where there were electives for middle school or high school, where we did have to absorb students of family and consumer science electives. So we've added additional electives. And what happens with the Hopkins schedule is that adjustments to schedules, I mean typically what happens is the first two weeks of school, even when students have a set schedule, they're in and out of the office and canceling. The guidance counselor's office trying to make changes, or if things aren't working, they're still changing their schedule. And schedules, blue student schedules would be available, any updates would be available in the student portal in mid-August, just like all notifications about class assignments and teachers. So students and parents could find information there, and they'll have a chance to review any adjustments made to a schedule, talk with the guidance counselor, and make additional adjustments if needed at the start of the school year. But we did go ahead and reallocate an information here. This was not an easy decision. I certainly, I wish students could have every single class that they could dream of. And I really, it's nothing to do with faculty. The faculty member, a wonderful, wonderful human being, who's been more than understanding, although personally so disappointed, says not a single faculty member would argue with the need for an additional 1.0 FTE in mathematics. And so if money were no object, we would just have that. But that's just not our current reality. And you can see what I prepared for you is how many faculty members are in each of those departments. And that includes teaching for middle school and high school and the requirement in math's core. So you can see, we really, really did have an issue prior to this. So, and why family and consumer science? So we essentially have four elective paths, computer science, music, art, and home economics, family and consumer science. The new accountability framework, so no child left behind, has, now there's a new accountability framework that we're moving into. We'll get our first accountability rating at the start of next year. We're going to do the MCAS presentation, everything else, and I'll present our new accountability rating. There are two new criteria. So one is attendance, it's across both schools, it's district-wide, elementary and middle high. But for middle high or high school campuses, the number of advanced courses that are offered. And the department of elementary and secondary decides what constitutes an advanced course. AP absolutely is. Honors, AP, and certain, certain mathematics courses, calculus, regardless of what designation it is counts. So that was also part of the, where would we go to look for reallocation? And in every one of our elective tracks, in computer science and finance, there's an AP option, it's AP economics. There's, and I'm not saying we necessarily offered that every year, that students wanted, but it was just part of the decision-making. In music, there's an AP option, in art, there's an AP option. I do believe next year, our art history elective that we're piling will actually be AP art history.
So just to be clear, with this change, we're going to have one FTE added total?
Not added, you're swapping out, you're reallocating. So at the top though, under math, we have three faculty. It's actually going to be four, four faculty members. And home ed, well, that program will no longer be offered. So that FTE is being reallocated to math.
Is it going to be actually hiring a new person?
Yes.
So we do have a reduction in force of the faculty member in that field, but of posting for a new position in math. So swapping out that FTE assignment essentially. So we aren't taking on more staff, but we're essentially reallocating resources based on the demand.
And that, I met with the faculty member today, who's impacted, who's affected by this, that we met today. And I was helping the person look at what, what their educational background is, the kind of professional development that they've done. We talked about a license that I believe is certification that the person is qualified for. So I'm also working with the person to see if they can pursue a license that might match with an existing demand, whether that's a full-time position or not. So we, we actually have, you'll see when we do personnel report, there are some positions you might say, wow, it looks like there's a lot of positions, and I don't know that I've seen all these postings. So you'll see like anticipated vacancies that will start posting things that we need. And in some cases, we want to see if, for example, this person, one, because they're a great contributor to our educational community, two, we want to do what we can to reduce unemployment liabilities on the town side. So if we can move quickly and see if in fact they are qualified to hold the license in an area that we have a need, then by contract, a person who is qualified for a unitate of professional teaching status must be considered for open positions for which they're qualified. So that would be a win all around.
In terms of student opportunity, with like open classroom designing and independent studies and stuff, if there were students that were interested in pursuing some more education along these lines, would they have an opportunity to do that in some way?
Yeah, so we do, we are pretty open to independent studies. We've had a number of those, I think, Mr. Beck has spoken with you all about those, whether it's virtual high school or independent study. If a student identifies an interest and then wants to pursue that, we work with them around it. These programs, I mean, the department, the only way to get certified down in home ed and family and consumer science is through this thing called portfolio review. They don't do a subject matter test. Many districts have eliminated their program entirely, which is not common anymore. But students certainly can pursue it. And I want to be clear, the math FTE, if needed, we're looking at what kind of, whether that's engineering or design or maker space type of elective. So it's not just like, oh, you lost an elective, and you think you'll take another one. Happy days. We don't, no, it wouldn't go well. So we're looking to balance with elective options.
And that goes to answer what the second question that I have would be, if eliminating these, like this style of course, opens us up to additional options of people trying to choice out or choose a different job, choose a different school.
Right. So that was part of that analysis about where, what appear to be the priorities that people have in terms of content in computer science, engineering, robotics, art, music. Those are things that are huge draws.
Yeah, if I recall from last month or earlier this month, there were three students enrolled.
And some of those courses, they were like a one and zero enrollment.
Yeah, I think three total in the courses in that, in that track.
In the middle blocks, yeah. There were some, some fully enrolled health courses, the person was teaching, that we had to reallocate to other staff who could teach those.
So does this require a vote?
No, just keeping you informed.
All right, FY19 budget updates.
So as I said, we have, Chris is going to talk a little bit about the school choice applications, but there's school choice funding application applying those funds. We have, we don't have an Excel spreadsheet or any updates to show you along those lines. The things that we're still waiting on is we have definitely now this reallocated math position, library media specialist from retirement, and a one-year leave from an English teacher at Hopkins. That those, right now, we have cost estimates in the budget. Once those people have been hired, we'll have exact figures. But that's a lot of estimating. And potentially, we have an anticipated vacancy in mathematics. Another teacher who's most likely moving will advertise for an anticipated vacancy in that position and an actual vacancy for the other. So that, that could be a lot of movement. And we could end up saving money, we'll see. We may have the final numbers, we'll give those to you. And I'm working really hard with other folks to try to finalize the schedule at Hadley Elementary School that ensures children's needs are being met and met well, but that we are not unnecessarily duplicating efforts. And so after we've taken a look at that, we also have some vacancies there that we need to post for in terms of one-to-one assistance. So when the final numbers are in closer to September, you will have another update on the FY19 budget.
So does that cover the personnel report?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions on the personnel report?
Long-term sub.
So we'll have a long-term sub for the one-year leave.
Because we have a leave, and then we'll have a long-term sub.
Got it.
Oh, gosh, and then the ADA, special education teacher. So we have a cost estimate, and that will make a big difference. If all of them, if all of the estimates were off by $5,000, which wouldn't be a huge off, and you're just trying to guess what education and staff somebody is going to come in at. So that could fluctuate the final numbers in that particular line that you saw in FY19 by $25,000.
But this, so we're, and I know that the monetary amount for different positions were varied too. We're looking at the .29 now, teacher, that's an elimination, and so we're moving that full-time faculty to math. So there's a potential for reallocation.
I originally didn't know we had the budget when I needed to balance. The last time we saw that, if you recall and heard it, .29, you saw it going in.
Got it.
So I wish that was, it's already, although, again, we could be in better shape depending on what the new line is, what they come in with.
Now, in terms of the classes at Hadley Elementary next year, you had mentioned after seeing where everybody lays in the classroom. I know this year, it's, there's a slight change in how those classes are being assigned, as opposed, like the teacher, with the teacher input and all that kind of stuff. Can you speak a little bit?
I sure can, that's probably helpful. So the, you said, change, I mean, how somebody experiences this, I completely respect, because change is always change. You can't deal with control, or why are we doing this? But what has historically happened, and I believe it's been done very, the teachers have been very thorough and have been very thoughtful, but historically what has happened is teachers got together. So let's say grade two is in grade three, grade three is in grade. So let's say grade two is meeting with grade three, grade three is meeting with grade four. They're up and down, so two meets with three, then with one. And they review the students who are coming up and the teachers who currently have the students. They have a conversation and then together they make recommendations for class lists. And there's a whole lot of thought that's going on there, but it's not transparent. It's not too explicit, it's just at the end of the day, here's a list. Here's a recommended list. So something else can be happening too, right? We can have move-ins come in. When teachers are creating those lists, they do take into consideration students who may have an IEP, but they're not necessarily looking at actual service delivery in the grids, right? So they're not looking at B grid services, which is supports in the general education sector. They're making really good, strong recommendations, but not looking at grids necessarily, have no way of knowing who move-in might be, have no way of knowing if parents have made a very specific request for a well-laid-out reason. Parents, it can't just be, there has to be some good compelling reason to consider a particular class assignment. So they don't have that information. And then what happens if we need to make adjustments because we had a move-in or a move-out? Or we noticed that students with very similar support needs, let's say, in a B grid, generalized support needs, have been distributing because there's been one way of looking at it. But in doing that distribution, we now created a situation where we have to duplicate resources, which is salary and benefits, so it adds up. So what I requested this year is there were a Google spreadsheet. Not everybody saw, it was locked only to the teacher whose class it was and then to somebody with an educational legitimate right, me, Pam Hallwood. And we asked teachers to put in fall, winter, spring data. That doesn't mean that's the whole picture. But this allows us that if we, if something happened that even the teacher student know about and we need to make some sort of adjustment or movement, we actually have data to look at to say, well, it looks like this student really needs some, you know, some peers to academically stretch with or some peers to group with, and so we're gonna make an adjustment. But having that data allows us to make adjustments that are more informed. There was also a note section where I encouraged teachers to write any kind of note that was qualitative in nature. This might be about peer relationships, social emotional development. And I also told teachers, you can still group kids if you'd like. And say, if we were doing this the old way, this is group A and this is group B. Or a teacher recommendation, they could put anything they wanted in the notes. So I would say teacher input is not diminished at all. The teachers were encouraged to write notes. And the notes would then allow me, cause I'm sitting here in the summer and they wanna go to the beach and they deserve to go to the beach. So I don't call them up and say, I gotta move and do this because of, for whatever. Again, it could be a move-in, it could be a move-out, it could be just making sure that schedules are effective, but also efficient. And we don't have people who can only see, the schedule isn't working for the specialist or the related service providers as well. So it was actually a request for additional data. It was different, and I think people reacted to, I didn't mean immediately, it was different. And so when things are different, it's like, I don't have to do all this. And I'm not saying it's finished being different, right? We had, the goal was, when we're making these recommendations and decisions, I explained to teachers, one, I believe that we owe it to parents. If an individual parent wants to say, I wanna understand how you made this recommendation, I wanna be able to say, here are all the data that we want that. And with just a list, I can't do that. I wasn't there, I didn't take, record the conversation. I also have explained that I owe it to the town. I owe it to the town, I owe it to the people, this community, and I owe it to the other departments. That when we have what appears to be a duplication of resources, I can look somebody in the eye and say, there was no other way. There was no other way to do this well by children and eliminate and reduce some of the expenditures associated with doing it this way. And I have to know that. And I couldn't, it's not that I don't trust people, but I couldn't say, well, I just had a list, right? It's just there's so many competing demands or limited amount of resources in the town. That was the why behind it, and that's what it looked like this time. And so in some cases, teachers still make classless recommendations. In some cases, they just have notes. I met with each grade level team on the last day of school for teachers. A lot of people said, you can do whatever, this particular grade, but they could be with anybody, they're gonna be fine, right? Just, there's two notes, that's all we need to give you. That's how it's about.
Thank you for that.
Sure, thank you for asking. I know there was some questions about that. And one other thing to clear it for people, there's been some discussion about fifth and sixth grade and maybe looking at that a little bit differently. I'll be emailing the teachers tomorrow. I was trying to give them some options, but to say, I just can't right now make it work. So one of the, I don't wanna say problems we were trying to solve, but the condition we are trying to improve is that it seemed like perhaps there were some behavioral problems that start to pop up in the older elementary grades. And some of it is just developmental, they'll start getting more independent. But some of it, one theory, which was logical, was that, gosh, they went with the same groups. Right? Cause somebody pointed out, it was a mixed meeting between some Hopkins faculty and elementary faculty, said, we see, yes, maturation happens during grade six and seven. There's a lot less of this than Hopkins. It was really a huge issue. It doesn't go entirely, but it diminishes. And so even elementary teachers said, well, they move around, how that's worked. And then we said, oh, well, this was around the school choice. So one strategy is to shut down school choice in order to keep a lid on these kind of peer relationship issues. But how about another strategy is we try to actually address the condition that might be contributing to the problem. So as much as I tried to make a couple of options work, like having a teacher be a grade-level specialist, I teach two subjects in one grade. Right now, if you're in grades five and six, you teach two subjects in two grades. It's called core rep. So grade-level specialist, I teach one grade, two subjects. A subject-level specialist, I teach one subject, two grades. The challenges I'm running into is that if math is taught all through the day, this says it's trickle-down effect for special education providers, math support interventions, right? Then that's all they can do is help fifth and sixth grade. That's the struggle I'm having. So I'm gonna share what I tried, encourage the teachers and the new principals to look at it next year with an eye on, let's really pay attention to things we notice. Try to define them as problems to be addressed, get clear on the conditions we wanna create. And it wasn't a waste of time, but chances are, it's going to look very much like it does right now. Each teacher teaches two grades, two subjects for next year. So no big changes on the horizon at this point. And we probably don't, we also need to make sure that parents understand the what, the why, and how of something, and that time keeps getting tighter for that. That's where we are at this point. But we are looking to do it possibly in a way that addresses some of these issues.
And yeah, and looking at, taking into account the grids on the students and the IEPs and everything like that, and trying to make sure that the service providers have enough time to actually service all the people I totally understand and respect them.
And if we do that more efficiently, again, it's not just the bottom line, it's when you do that more efficiently, we also aspire to become effective at being an inclusive district, right? So that doesn't mean if you, if your least restricted environment is in a separate classroom, that's what you're going to get. So LRE, least restricted environment, that stays the same. But inclusion is an aspiration of ours. So when the support providers and the certified special education teachers are able to use their time efficiently, they can actually be in general education classrooms, which is really wonderful for students with significant needs and all kinds of things. It's another reason that we need to do it as efficiently as possible.
Thanks for those explanations.
Anything else on this, part of that FY18 budget update? School committee retreat, my favorite topic.
Oh, but Humira's not here, and it's her place that we're going to.
Did we decide that?
She had offered a conference, or do we wanna pick a date and see if, maybe two dates are possibilities? And see if she can?
Sure.
What are we thinking, any like month of July or month of August?
You all can tell me, I can tell you what doesn't, when I'm not available. And it's really just, I would say before, from any time from July 5th to, let's say, August 8th. Cause then I'm taking a short vacation after that, and then essentially, then it's open for me.
What day of the week are we looking at? What, like, can we think about like how many hours we're looking to spend? That might shape how we decide. So like in general, like I've never obviously done one of these. How much do we typically spend?
We've actually done one of these. Yeah, they did it in the evening, it was just, I'm not gonna say.
I think we did afternoon.
Late afternoon, three, and then eat dinner.
They went to the Hamlet Farms.
Yeah, it was not like, 108 or?
We started at one or two.
Yeah, it was more turn.
Was it? And we went till, I think, Saturday.
So like?
We actually did it in the evening. We did have dinner there, didn't we?
Yes.
Was it good?
I'm looking at this cheeseburger pizza slot behind me. It wasn't as good as that. Yeah, so we could do something like that after eight hours. But yeah, I think we were trying to get seven, seven hours. Pretty sound, missing a full day at work.
Right.
Which is really the issue.
That's gonna limit me, yeah.
Are there better times and dates at work for your term?
Well, no, the weekdays are difficult in general for me, especially coming up. Unfortunately, we're going to be extremely short-staffed starting in July. So I'm gonna have a hard time getting out of work too early. I get out of work at 3:30, I can probably get out of work at 2:30, depending on the day of the week, and then we could be, where was her place again?
She's in Amherst, but that's not, I was just trying to get, you know, campus of that spending.
Right, right, cause that was a, so, I mean, if we started someplace at like three, would that be too late?
I could do three, do dinner, go work in dinner, and try to wrap up by nine. That's totally reasonable.
So if we're trying for the weekday, I can't do July 5th or 6th.
Oh, and just putting the agenda out to you anyways, I was just giving you a.
And then I have to do the week of July 16th.
To me, what about the week of July 16th?
I'm, I'm gonna be able to do that.
What about the week of the 23rd?
I could do the end of that week, the 23rd.
That's the one day that week that I would have a hard time doing. I can make it work if I have two.
The following week I could do the 30th.
Can I ask, if anybody is mid-week like crazy, I'm just stating a preference. I have one more ticket home to see my sister, and I just have to put it. So when things are mid-week, I know I only go there for a weekend.
So wait, what's your preference then?
Like mid-week, like a Wednesday, or then I know I'm not, there's no chance of.
There's problems, I can't, you can't do the week of, can you do the 18th?
I can't do that entire week.
Yeah, and I can't do the 25th.
What about the 20th?
July 31?
I could do that, I can't do August 1st.
I think I can do July 31, or 30.
Yeah, if you wanna try to keep it to like a Tuesday, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, I can do 31 or 1, if you wanna do that Tuesday or that one.
So 31 works for some people, and then how about picking another, like, what about August 7th? Does that work?
7th works for me.
7th or 8th?
The 8th is not.
Does 8th, 7th work for other people?
Yeah, 7th works for me, 8th doesn't. 6th?
7th would work for me.
And we could, it won't be the end of the world, but about the 21st, just kidding, just in case there's a problem for Humira.
May, or July or?
August.
Out of town.
About the week of August 13th?
Let me think, I am only, I could do the 7th, oh, yeah, I could do the 7th, now probably that's it.
I am out of town 13 through 23.
So maybe we can just, right? I said the 1st?
Or universal, actually, it's not.
So we have, all of you are available July 31st. I can see that Humira is available on July 31st.
So let's put it in, what were time we were saying?
Let's say 3 to 9. And even if for some reason Humira's place wasn't available, you work in.
I work in Leeds.
In Leeds. So the other thing I can ask too is if CES could give us a room too. I thought about that, and then Humira offered, see, it's collaborative educational services in Northampton, had said we could, so I can ask that as a backup also.
3:30 to 9.
Three, I think it said three or 3 to 9.
3 to 9, sorry.
3 to 9, 7 to 11, and we're just gonna hope and pray that Humira is available. And I would text her, but if I let you know the meeting on, I can do 3 to 9.
Even if we stayed, why would we text her?
I don't know why, it may have seen us and just don't do that.
Is there another day that you wanted to?
Well, I think we're running out of options, but let's see.
Let's meet her there.
So July 24th, 25th is not an option?
Um, no, I think, was it?
You're correct.
27, no, 27 you can't do key. 27, yep, 27 I can't do. You can't do the week of the 16th, right, Tim?
Yeah, I might be able to do that week.
July 12th.
Well, we said, what about July 32? I can just say, forget that, that is not an option at all. Was July 30 down, 30?
30 is fine for me.
Does that work? Okay, so the 30th or 31st?
Yeah.
Okay.
As is the 1st if you wanna, for me at least.
I think somebody else did not, you had her.
August 1st.
I am tentatively out of town, but we could hold that as an alternative meeting right now.
Okay. And then what I would do is I'll check in with Humira about her availability. I'll figure out the space that we'll be in. And this is certainly allowable by open meeting. I will create an agenda through a Google Doc on your email, on your school email address, so that you can add to it. I have some thoughts and ideas about things that might help you think through evaluating present level of performance, determining where you wanna be. And I can just suggest those. I will facilitate take notes, and it does have to be a public meeting and how many of you would like to be in the meeting. So we'll post it as a regular meeting.
We'll plan to do a work in dinner as part of that.
Yeah.
Okay. Any public comment?
Anyone?
Hey, yeah. Business manager report.
Okay. So we have a few reports today. First is the budget summary report. Really not a lot to discuss here. I would recommend just zipping right to the last page and looking at the available funds that we have. A lovely number of minus $238,000.
Who would've thought I made this report?
We'll take that out of your check.
It's actually, believe it or not, I ran this last week, we ran another warrant today, and now it's down to minus 198. So basically, we went through, closed out a lot of purchase orders, items like that, immediately gained $40,000, so, which was kind of what I was expecting. You know, it really wasn't that much of a surprise. But nevertheless, that's where we stand with the budget. I have still some final transfers to do. Moving a little bit more money to grants, some to Circuit Breaker. And the rest would be somewhere here, I have a post-it note with the amount we need for school choice, there it is, to make up the difference in what you see here. And that is $250,000. I also handed out a kind of a school choice projection before the meeting, it was not a reading package, just to show what using the $600,000 total for this year means to the school choice picture. It's not bad, actually, in fact, it's better than what you've seen before. We're using less this year, and the 250 that I'm asking for approval on is kind of a maximum amount, you know? We might not need every bit of that, if so, I'll use less.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
So the projection applied to FY18, you sell $600,000 here. Is that because we've already applied $350,000 in previous vote?
We did 350 and the 250 here, yes.
Oh, so it's not too good, can't top of the 600.
No, no.
So by applying the 250 tonight, it'll bring me to what you originally valued.
Should've started with that, right?
He likes to give you a chance to show off. He likes to give you a chance to show off.
That's right.
Since I can't keep the lunch account balanced, but apparently tonight we'll see that Chris got it balanced.
Okay, so we do need a motion, um, to approve the transfer.
So can I just ask too, though, Chris, if we're down to one ninety-eight, you still leave the two fifteen to him?
We do, yes. Um, I, the reason this was not in your meeting package is because I waited until about four o'clock this afternoon to wait until we had as many items as possible posted, and then just look it up and see what we still.
And it's an up to amount, what it allows us for is if there's any expenses, one, then we get additional expenses rolled into it. And also, yeah, so that's private. We don't use it all, then it goes back and forth.
So what we see next month then, what the actual was that was used?
Uh, you should. I can't say a hundred percent for sure, but that is certainly the goal. It all depends on.
The time.
Basically, yes. The town is looking for, uh, the final transfers to be done, I think it was July twenty-second. So typically, you wait till the very end, because, you know, there's no price for finishing early, but there's certainly a, a problem if you do, and then all of a sudden bills come rolling in after, so. Um, you kinda wait until the very last minute to do it, and, um, so it's, that's right around where your next meeting is, I believe, so.
Okay.
It'll, it'll be either there or at the next meeting, depending on the timing of your meeting. And the language is basically to transfer up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in expenses to the school choice account.
Oh, right.
To the school choice account.
Correct, yes.
So I make a motion to, uh, transfer up to two hundred and fifty five, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of expenses to the school choice account.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Please, thank you.
Then we have the grants report, um, most of the grants are used up. That health grant with two hundred and fifty-eight dollars is now down to about a hundred and six, I believe, uh, since we ran it. Circuit breaker, we still have some transfers to apply to that, you see a hundred thousand, and circuit breaker as well, if we don't need to, um, you know, apply all the transfers to it, then we won't, we'll carry over more. Um, you know, we won't be carrying over more than what's allowed by the state, so there's no danger of that. But that's another one of those items. I did several, uh, purchase orders today to the circuit breaker account. Some of the special ed tuition, uh, bills, they're very tough to get by the end of the year. Melissa's been calling, I've been calling and emailing, and they come when they come. So what I did was, you know, and we don't know the exact amounts of them either, it's not like they just take the bill and break it up into ten or twelve months. They apply it on the number of days the student attended that month. Um, in the case of one where we have someone coming into the district, it depends on how many days they spent in the district, so you can't really, um, I guess accurately just predict what the bill will be. So what I did was I looked back over the past six months, took the highest bill, and put that purchase order in against circuit breaker. That way, if the bill comes in lower, then we just, you know, basically, we just use less, that's all we do, so, um, we took care of a number of those today, and, uh, we're actually in very good shape right now. The list of open POs, which was twenty pages long, um, two weeks ago, is now down to about a third of a page, so, um, you know, we're certainly making progress with that. And the goal is to get it down to zero, so.
Look at that lunch talk.
Look at that, whopping balance with no parentheses around it.
Wow.
She had to shake that.
Yeah.
Um, sadly, that was the result of a transfer of salaries to the, I have to be honest, I can't, um, to the, to local budget. Um, so that's how we ended up with a, a balance of positive seventeen hundred dollars.
Although, in terms of collection, Chris did point out after input from the school committee last time to make the collections more user-friendly on the parent end. Ms. Zach and Chris followed up on that, and they discovered that there was actually a glitch in my school box story. So that, once that was addressed, what did you tell me, in about a day it went, they got?
They got eight hundred dollars in one day, it was up to five thousand dollars in delinquent accounts, that was five thousand and change, um, when Diane emailed me last week, and then she emailed me the next day and said, hey, we found an issue with the software. Um, you know, when I requested that she use the software in her, she said, we already do it, automatically emails, uh, you know, the house when a balance hits a certain negative amount. And then when she went and checked on it, she realized that some of those accounts were not actually getting the emails. So they changed the settings on it, and lo and behold, the first day, they got eight hundred dollars in delinquent payments. She was down to thirty-eight hundred dollars after three days from the five thousand, so definitely some progress made, hopefully it will continue. Um, so that's, uh, that's certainly a good thing, and it will also help going forward. You know, it's, it's one of those things that's not going to just help this year, but next year as well.
Great.
That's how much we have in school choice right now, it's seventy-nine.
Uh, that was at the end of May, yes, so we'll, we'll be getting another payment of about forty-five, forty-six thousand dollars in June, and then of course, reducing it by the, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand. And the preschool revolving, I received the check, I, I think I mentioned it last time, that there was a check we were waiting for from another district, uh, that came in, it's not in this report, it was deposited in June, actually, just today. Uh, but that was a check for six thousand dollars, and there was another one for a thousand, so that's all going to move it up in the other direction along with the June
School account, the student account goes down by twenty-seven thousand, indeed, and your stuff.
Yeah, that's, you know, I mean, you can see how it, it kinda builds and builds and builds, and then everybody does things.
Right.
The last couple of months of the year.
So I think some of the big features.
Capital planning?
Okay, so.
So last, last month we had, we talked about, um, it was requested that we do a ten-year new.
That's correct, yes.
So we talked with, you weren't your boss.
Yeah.
So we talked about what would be represented on that, what would be those kinds of recurring items that we would expect to come up, um, and just syncing things up with, you know, feel more.
And what we will need to vote tonight to accept it, the conversation remember to our last meeting was, this is not finished, we'll discuss it at the retreat, the town has a deadline, has to us to get some feedback, and actually, the deadline is Friday, they know that you were doing tonight, so after it's approved, we'll give it tomorrow, or we can email it tonight after it's approved, right, over to date it. And that's just for their capital planning committee, town, you just have a general sense of some of the projects we pick around the horizon, does not prevent us from updating, you from updating it, and we will provide updating information to the towns.
Did you all discuss the health and security upgrades?
Um, it's the police and fire.
Yeah, I hesitate to really discuss the security upgrades.
We discussed them in executive session, but also the help was the water bottles.
Yes, um, that was additional water.
I can't.
They're here somewhere.
They do exist.
That's, that's basically to, yeah, to replace the existing ones, and apparently to have some kind of lighting, um, with a sign, so, yeah.
A big lit arrow. You can break out the superintendent's.
Yeah, but you can.
Uh, and the cafeteria equipment, um, that is for Hopkins. New serving lines with drains, um, it's one of those things where they, they have these, basically, serving lines that hold hot water, and you put, um, the metal trays of food, they kind of rest over the hot water, and it keeps the food hot. Um, but to drain them, they take towels and stick it in, wring it out, stick it in, wring it out. I mean, it's, it's kind of a crazy procedure, obviously, and they've been doing that for the past, you know, twenty or thirty years. So that, and, and they, they said with the drains, you know, they will obviously be cleaner because the, you know, the water will get out of there, um, a lot better. Uh, the other item is the walk-in cooler, I may have mentioned this last time, that the cooler that they have back there now, uh, the floor is rusting, and, um, it's, it's in pretty bad shape at this point. Um, and then they had, um, a refrigerator and freezer that were both giving them hard times as well, uh, and fan repairs over the, um, I don't even know what you call it, the big thing in the middle.
Do you sound shocked and you like me, please continue.
And, and there's a big fan, an exhaust fan, and.
Is that the unitized replacement?
Um, the unit vent replacement is, is somewhere in.
The unit vent replacement are the ones, in Hopkins has the older ones that are up in the.
Yeah.
Oh, the, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, this is an exhaust fan, and the motor is having problems with it, so, um, that's to repair the motor.
So those three things are included.
In the, in the cafeteria equipment, yes.
Now, is there any way to, um, retrofit any drainage system into that Bay Marine? The water thing that holds the things?
Um, that, that's in front of the big thing in the.
That's a.
Full of the thing.
Um, yeah, I just, I don't know the terminology, Diane and Zach saw this, so I'd never.
I'm gonna send it to her.
Yeah, I, I.
Bad language, exactly, please. School committee would like to know.
I'm not sure how much that would knock this down, I was just curious. Here's the best side of the mystery, yeah, most owners trying to find the transplays.
Yeah. Um, I don't, I don't know how they would do it, but I'd certainly ask, it's, it's not a problem. We did make one huge, um, benefit, and what they would do is they would take that off and attach it to the new one, and that is they had these wooden shelves that, um, were on the kitchen side, and so every time they either, you know, lifted the food over, the shelf didn't fold. Um, so there were a couple of things, number one, it was made of wood, not the, you know, the cleanest surface, and number two, um, it didn't fold down, so they, they literally had to reach over, you know, which I would imagine after a while, on a, a big container full of food, it's pretty hard on the back, so, um, we did replace that this year with something that folds down, made of stainless, um, and we did check and make sure that if the unit was replaced, that shelf could be just taken off and applied to the new one as well. Uh, but I will look into that and ask her if that can be done.
Chris, good morning, I'd like to see the girls locker room in there again.
Yeah, that's one of those items that I actually bumped up. We had four hundred thousand dollars with an estimate from two thousand and nine, again, I just thought we should put something over than a ten-year-old estimate. So I added a hundred thousand dollars to it. It may or may not be enough, but at least it's certainly more in the ballpark than it was.
And the air conditioners will be completed this summer?
They are there right now.
The workers?
Not the workers.
Excellent.
Right, not the air conditioners. Well, they may be, they may be sitting on palace there, I don't know, but, yeah, the workers started today, actually.
Excellent. A motion to accept.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think this is the best, uh, you know, first pastor we're gonna get for now, and we're gonna talk at the retreat all about just future priorities and, you know, strict teacherly around us, but, yeah.
So a motion to accept the tenured capital budget timeline for Halle elementary schools.
Seconded, okay, all in favor?
And that was all I had.
Okay, great.
I will send this to David right now.
Thank you.
How do you get the internet?
School committee reports, family and community engagements.
So I make the joke of, how are you able to get the internet? Because I've been diligently trying to, um, access the backend survey monkey, and I had it for like ten seconds.
Well, yesterday or last night, it was like right around a hundred.
Yeah, so, um, thank you for sending up that other email, um, we are up to a hundred and twenty-one responses, um, from the quick glance that I was able to take before my internet went away. Um, it looks like seventy-four responses on the, uh, Halle Elementary side, and forty-seven, seventy, yeah, seventy-four, Halle Elementary, forty-seven, not Hopkins. Um, so it'd be great to try to figure out a way to get some more engagement from Hopkins families, as well as Halle Elementary families, um, and I will also put out another, another blast on Facebook, um, just to encourage people, another encouragement, I'll do that, I'll tell, I'll do that either this evening or tomorrow evening, probably tomorrow evening. Um, and with the, with the initials, it was, with the initial launch, it was, I believe, eighteen, or eighty-three responses via, um, the link that was sent out in emails, and fourteen that were sent, fifteen that were, that went through the face, went through Facebook. Um, so we're just hoping to get as much response as possible, um, and then I was looking just to try to get some preliminary results to share with you all, but unfortunately, I was unable to access that here, and I did not have the chance to grab it, this, grab it this morning. So I do have amounts, but I won't have any actual results until, until.
Okay, I think you, he could send those out in the interim, as long as we don't.
Yeah.
React to it.
Sure, and then we can share them at the next school committee meeting and talk about, and use them to form decisions in around at the retreat. And I would say, looks roughly, I should know how many individual families we have here, I don't have off the top of my head, but I'm guessing the response rate right now is around, right around twenty-five percent, which is great, especially, I mean, I know we want everybody to, and we're encouraging people, but I think we'd feel comfortable leading information from the twenty-five percent response rate.
And seventy-four percent of the people that access that, access the link finishes, will have completed the survey, so that's also, that's also a good indicator there. So we're gonna keep it open from the end of this week, and then I will, I will, um, download the, uh, results and share them around school committee.
Perfect.
That would probably help us with.
All right, great, thank you for that. Uh, policy, so, um, we had previously talked about policies, um, A, B, C, D, E and F, right, that's what we have, the selected chart that we've got in here, um, schedule here, Keith and I had gone through those, uh, you had seen a first read back in March, and we just wanted to give folks a chance to ask any questions they might have about changes. Um, the chart really does highlight why the revision was made, and a lot of it was, you know, bringing them up to date with current legal language, or current practice, um, with mask, Massachusetts Association of School Committee's language, or, um, in some cases, health language, um, in some of the policies, and best practices.
And where it says, see track changes, just remember, you were sent all the track changes in a separate.
Yeah.
A couple, few weeks.
For the March meeting, yeah.
Any questions?
Okay, so we do have to vote on this one, um, they get a motion to really adopt, right, the revised policies that's outlined in the policy review schedule.
Motion to accept the revised policies for the policy review schedule.
Seconded, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so policies, great, so next we have, um, financial tri board, I have no update since we last.
They not in the feedbacks room?
Yeah. Fields, I was curious about the conversation we had last meeting.
Yeah, so as it turns out, let's see if I do justice to this, so as it turns out, Berkshire Design is not, was not even in a position to go to the conservation committee at this last meeting. Chris can talk about what, they have some additional analysis that they need to do as far as the backhoe, and some wetlands analysis, can you speak on to that?
Sure, yes, um, they told me, I just emailed them this morning to remind them that if they wanted to make the July tenth meeting, they had to have the items in by tomorrow, um, and they got back to me later in the morning and said, they thought they had everything finished by now, but they are not finished. Uh, what they need to do now, because of the way some of the wetlands testing went, they need to get a backhoe here and essentially do like a perk test, um, in various spots around the field. Uh, so they asked if the town had a backhoe we could use, I spoke with Jeff Mish today and asked him to see if he could coordinate the town having somebody with a backhoe come and dig the holes. If they can't do it, then of course we'll have to hire somebody to do it. Um, but that really puts us behind, quite honestly, for this year, because at the very best, at this point in time, we may be able to make. at this point in time, we may be able to make the August meeting for the Conservation Commission, possibly not, because depending on how soon they can dig these holes and run the tests, and that's, you know, to be coordinated between the town and Berkshire Design, or just for Berkshire Design to hire it out, then they have to go back and revise the plans, you know, for when the, the tests come out, and I don't know that they would necessarily have that ready. He said they needed a month in advance if they're going to get a permit. That would mean they'd pretty much have to have it by July 15th, and I don't know that they'll necessarily have that completed by then, which means they wouldn't really have the plans done until, you know, enough time to get it in for around August 15th or the September meeting, and at that point in time, you know, it's September, we go out to bid, that's going to take a month, now it's October before we even get to... So...
I think it's helpful just to remind people of the timeline, too, because they may get lost in it, that, so last October, CPA very generously sends us that money and awarded that money, but what needed to happen, as some people might say, wait up the money, why'd you vote? So then what you have to do, and what we did, was we did a request for qualifications or a request for proposal, I'm not sure if it was QRP, but we needed somebody to actually put together the designs that would then create the bid specifications. So we awarded that, we got our money in October, we put that RFP together, we put it out, we selected and awarded in January, and Berkshire Design got that award. Berkshire Design's been working on the designs, but creating the designs, as you can see, is a pretty involved process, involves testing soil and doing, going to Conservation Committee. And when those are finished, so that is Berkshire's work, and when those are finished, then that's what creates the bid specifications. We advertise the bid, that's what Chris said, about a month, we gotta advertise it, and then we'll award the bid, and then we, but those are our...
Meanwhile, too, just to add on that, right, CPA, first CPA stipulations, we can't spend any CPA dollars until we raise the complete amount.
I want to make sure, and you could be, because I know you're also speaking with CPA, I want to be sure that we're just very clear on what those stipulations are, because my memory was that we had to spend some money, and I didn't know that it had to be some sort of match for money or something else, but I'd like clarity on that, maybe you have it too, that we're, that we're just really clear on what...
That is my understanding, is, you know, maybe it's worth, given that we have a sense of where we are in the timeline, getting on their next agenda and going to briefing them. My sense is they wanted us to have full amounts in the pocket for this phase, because what they don't want us to do is, is go and spend all of their money, all of the town's money that CPA had said was okay for us to, to use, and that the town had voted to for us to use, but have that money be insufficient, and then have to go back and ask for further funds. And I know, so we're, you know, we're estimating we're 70 to 80 to $100,000 in need of further fundraisers, so that's something we've continued to do.
Did you want to send that email to David?
For capital plan?
No, that's okay, I was gonna say, before I...
I can send another one.
Just CPA, I just want to, Amy has to get CPA agenda, she'll hold. Don't forget that, another timeline's so tight, I appreciate that.
Well, believe that is what I got for Amy to come back.
And if the town does not have a backhoe that we can use for that perk test, does that increase anything with Berkshire Design?
It does, yes. I'm hoping, as I said to Jeff, use your charm, Jeff.
I just messes it up.
So, yeah, we're hoping that he can, you know, I don't know how long it would take, quite honestly, I have no idea. I can reach out to Berkshire and just ask, are we talking an hour of just basically digging some holes around the field, or are we talking several hours, you know, because I think the Highland Park probably would like to know that as well, so I will ask him that.
Well, Taylor Rental did, did advertise around Father's Day, like, your father, big toy.
Really?
And I've got a shovel.
Well, he didn't really, he didn't offer to dig any holes.
Yeah, the scary thing is, he said, in the email, it says, we will need to do some test pits, so I can't imagine that's just a couple of shovels full, it sounds, it sounds much larger, so...
Pit does not sound small.
All right, anything else on the fields? Is there anything on fundraising that you want to bring up, whether we...
No, we've got, no, we've got plans, we're still working on it.
Okay, all right. CES, I don't, if you are not here, we'll pass over all of them. Okay, actually, so we just have some approvals to do. Approval AP warrants submitted in May, is there a motion for that?
Motion to approve the AP warrants submitted in May 2018?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Payroll staying? Okay, approval of warrants submitted in May 2018, that is payroll, is there a motion for those approval? Warrants submitted in May 2018, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we approved, sorry, the approval of the May 29, 2018 minutes that were included in our package, is there a motion for any questions on the minutes?
Approval of the minutes? Second?
All in favor? And we did the handbook, and we did the policies, great. Anything else before we talk about the next meeting, David? Look at that on the calendar, we would normally be meeting July 28th or 23rd, I know I won't be here, but I mean, I'll be here either.
So I was gonna say, so then if I have my, so you picked three dates, potentially, preferably 7/31, so possibly moving school committee to 7/30. Would that work in school committee 7/30, and then either June 2/31 or...
That's a hard one. Yeah, it's harder for me to do back to back. All right, I have a short school committee meeting.
I can do that for you.
That'll be good. Okay, so we'll, we'll put the July 30th on here for him. Assuming the 31st might work for the retreat, or... All right, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.